Good evening. My name is Fred Chase. Today is Tuesday, August 2nd, and I will open this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. If you would all kindly rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I've been reminded this evening, councilors, that we should all pay particular attention to keeping the microphone close at hand because it is sometimes difficult to pick up our discussion during the recorded meetings. And this meeting is being aired live and recorded. The council has been informed by the Veterans Service Director of the town that of the passing of two veterans, residents of the town, in recent days. And I would like you to join me. I have before me a letter of condolence issued to the family of Mr. Raymond L. Perry upon his passing on July 19th. Mr. Perry served in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. In addition, I have a letter of condolence issued with respect to Mr. William F. O'Donnell upon his passing on the 23rd of July. Mr. O'Donnell served in the United States Navy during World War II and the Korean War. I would ask you, please, if you would all join me in a moment of silence in tribute to these veterans and others of the town who have passed in recent days. Thank you. I thank you very much. First item of business is the approval of minutes of prior meetings. And we have three meetings to consider. The first being the council meeting of May 24th, 2022. And for the benefit of the councilors, I would note that four councilors were not in attendance at that meeting and therefore should not take part in the vote. They include Peter Columbodis, Frank Souza, Matt Rushton, and Sean George. And I think that may, in fact, leave us unable to approve the minutes for that particular meeting this evening. We need to carry that item forward to our next meeting. The next meeting for which approval of minutes is required is the meeting of June 7th, 2022. During that meeting, I note that Peter Columbodis, Mr. Souza, and Mr. Wood were absent. And those councilors, Mr. Souza here tonight, you may not participate in the vote. It appears to me that we probably can proceed with the approval of those. I would welcome any motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we do need a roll call vote, and I would ask for one now, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six to zero.
The final meeting minutes for approval would be the council meeting of July 12th. That was our last council meeting in this chamber. Absent during those proceedings were councilors George and Perry. I think actually that now with the presence of Consulor Columbodis, we may consider approval of those minutes. Is there?
Which minutes are we talking about?
We're talking about, I'm sorry, the minutes of July 12th.
Actually, Peter was absent.
I was here.
Peter was absent for that one, actually. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me. Consulor Rushton, Peter Columbodis, and Dr. Perry, you were all unavailable that evening. So again, it looks to me as though we would not be able to consider approval of those minutes at this time.
I think you have five. Yeah.
No, you can.
Yes, you have five.
You have enough.
Yep.
You have enough.
One, two, three, four, five.
All right. Thank you. I stand corrected.
Rushton.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Announcements from the President. I do have several announcements this evening. Firstly, I'm happy to report that Ms. Emily Williams, the Director of the Senior Center, has informed the council of the upcoming 100th birthdays of not one, not two, but three town residents. And I'm happy to say that we will be, the council will be offering proclamations in honor of their 100th birthday celebrations, which I'll ask that all the councilors kindly sign this evening before departure. The first recipient is Alice White. On the occasion of her 100th birthday, it is therefore ordered that Saturday, August 6th, 2022, will be recognized as Alice White Day in the town of Bridgewater. And congratulations to Alice White. Secondly, for Ms. Emily Stone, Ms. Emily Stone will celebrate her 100th birthday on September 24th, Saturday. And on that date, the town will recognize her 100th birthday celebration as Emily Stone Day in the town of Bridgewater. And finally, Ms. Lilian Dupree, who will turn 100 years on September 27th, Tuesday, on that date, Lilian Dupree will be recognized and the town will celebrate Lilian Dupree Day in the town of Bridgewater. So my congratulations to all three recipients. That's a great milestone, and we're very happy to extend our congratulations to each of those three young ladies. Thank you. Another announcement. The council has experienced some difficulty in recent months with respect to council attendance. And you've perhaps made note of that just by virtue of the meeting minutes that we've been unable to approve. And that's been true for the last several meetings, that we've been unable to approve certain pending meeting minutes. And obviously, summer travel plans and COVID have interceded to cause difficulties with respect to that. We have had meetings where we have not been assured of having a quorum until actually a few minutes past the designated starting time of the meeting. I would ask the councilors, please be mindful that it would be most helpful if you would alert the council clerk to your plans to be absent, if that's the case, in advance. And I think that most of you have been able to do that, but on some occasions, we've been a little bit left in the lurch, not knowing if we'd have quorum for a meeting. Now, I'm sure that situation is going to remedy itself, but there's one other related housekeeping matter, and that concerns committee business. And unfortunately, some committee business before the council has been stalled in recent months, in some cases owing to the inability of councilors to attend meetings or the inability of committees to actually call meetings and hold meetings. I think that's a more pressing problem, but one that should be remedied quite easily. As the councilors know, there are several possible remedies for that situation, one being that if a chair of a committee does not call a meeting, it's possible for the other members of the committee, a majority of the members, to call a meeting in place of the chair. In addition, it's certainly possible for the council to recall from the committee legislation that has been referred to it for consideration and bring it back to the full council if a meeting has not taken place. Finally, also, please bear in mind that if and as necessary, the council president may make further changes to the membership makeup of committees for the purpose of expediting completion of council business. So with those comments, I'm sure we won't need to address the matter again, and I thank you very much for your consideration. Moving on, we do have a proclamation this evening. In addition to those birthday proclamations, I'm happy to announce that the town of Bridgewater is paying tribute to Robert J. Mansonelli Jr., who has served as fire captain of the Bridgewater Fire Department and will be retiring. And I would like to read the text of his proclamation before the council. Robert J. Mansonelli, Mansonelli Jr. has retired as fire captain of the town of Bridgewater after a successful 35-year career in municipal service. And whereas in 1987, Captain Mansonelli Jr. joined the Bridgewater Fire Department, and whereas during his tenure with the town, Robert moved up in the ranks, starting as firefighter from 1987 to 1996, then as a firefighter slash EMT intermediate from 1996 to 2000, and then as a firefighter slash paramedic from 2000 through 2006. And whereas in 2007, Robert was promoted to lieutenant. And whereas in 2016, Robert was promoted to captain and served in this position until his retirement on June 30th, 2022. And whereas Robert held other positions throughout his career, which included fire alarm supervisor, assistant mechanic, tech rescue team, dive team, critical incident stress management consular, and CPR instructor. And whereas Robert provided valuable services to the residents of the town of Bridgewater through his assistance during their time of need, and he did so without hesitation and without concern for his own safety each time the call of duty arose. Resolved, therefore, that, Bridgewater Town Council hereby extends their congratulations to Captain Robert J. Mansonelli Jr. for his dedication and service to the town of Bridgewater. And once again, I would ask, please, if all the councilors would kindly sign the appropriate proclamation this evening before your departure. And congratulations to Mr. Mansonelli. Thank you. Next, citizen open forum. I would like to welcome citizens of the town who care to step forward and offer comments or remarks. Kindly do so by stepping forward to the podium, introducing yourself by name, and stating your street, and kind of limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hunt.
Good evening. Mary-Lee Kenny Hunt, 80 Austin Street, but speaking as your town clerk. So I'm going to read it because I passed it out to you, but I just wanted you to have this information. I thought it might be better for you to be able to keep it and see it. Hearing the good news of the five charter changes requested by Bridgewater to the state legislature passing and being placed on the governor's desk for signature, I would like to present the council with some considerations for moving forward. Since there was no election of councilors in April 22, as was originally suggested in the charter changes, I presume the council may be anticipating an election of councilors at some earliest possible time. And to that end, I want to let you know some of the logistics involved and suggest that you meet as soon as possible for a discussion on the item, putting it on your agenda. So the bullet points on this. Unless the language was text altered by the legislature, which I don't know because we haven't seen it yet, the charter changes require an election of councilors within 180 days of the changes taking effect, which will be at the time that the governor signs it. That would put the deadline at roughly sometime in February 2023, to have to have the election before then. If the council wants a town council election concurrent with the state general election on November 8th, nomination papers must be available by September 2nd. That would be 64 days before the election. That's the legal time. All citizens must be notified of the precinct changes by October 19th, if you want, this is all if you want the election on November 8th. A double election will require two check-in stations, one for each of the two ballots. Paid election staff will be doubled for what was expected to be a moderately large election. Finding double staff might be a challenge. We've had some challenges making sure we have enough election staff. Having all precincts electing new councilors may produce a larger than previously anticipated election. I really don't know how to judge it, but I'm guessing it might cause a lot of people to turn out. Our new tabulators can handle separating, putting in two different ballots. They can, it separates them. But our storage needs are going to be taxed with a double number of ballots. That's going to happen no matter what. I'm just throwing that in there as this is a thing we've got to think about, we have to think about. And because early voting is offered for the state election, it must also be offered for the town election. The early voting location will be the Academy Building. So those are just some things to keep in mind as we're looking at dates and what we're thinking of doing. So given the logistics of election preparation, I suggest that the council schedule an emergency meeting before August 12th, 2022, to discuss and determine the date for the town council election. I ask to be invited and allowed to participate where the subject interacts with our office and our office's requirements by the Secretary of State, which may not be familiar to everyone else. We'd just like to not tell you what to do, but offer you that kind of guidance when there are dates and deadlines that would be appropriate. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. Certainly, the election will break a lot of new ground for the council, so we appreciate your guidance in that respect. Are there other citizens who care to step forward for citizen open forum? Yes, please, Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Good evening. I sent an email, it was like 1:00 in the morning today, to all of you. I don't know if you all received it. And I have to apologize, I left you off, and I realize I left Consulor Rushton off, so maybe that could be forwarded to him. I don't know how it works, you guys, you know, Consulor gets those, but I forgot to include him. But I can always send it to him. I see that there's going to be a discussion about raw milk. It says discussion. I'm not sure what the discussion is supposed to be about, but I just want to, you know, hopefully you had a chance to read my lengthy email and look at some of the links that I have. I've been doing my own research. I don't know if Mr. Chase has gotten anything, but I, every time I Google or anything, has there been any major concerns with raw milk in Massachusetts? I can't find anything, though. One thing that keeps popping up is 100 years ago. There's spotty things here and there, but it's not major. If you look at the number of people that actually drink this product or use it, it does have, no one's denying that there's, can be risk with that, but it also can have risk with other foods. The percentage is not that great, and it's not going to be contagious. It's only to somebody that drinks it, and if they are not handling the product carefully. And cantaloupes can be a problem. Lettuce can be a problem. And there has been problems with pasteurized products. So it's not only raw milk. And in Bridgewater, it's legal in the state, it's able to drink, there's no debate about that. Having it not allowed in Bridgewater, if that's even a consideration, doesn't make sense. The number of farmers in Bridgewater are like, you know, five, you know, it's very little than, and you're not going to have a mass production. The places that, other parts of the country that have the most problems are the bigger herds, and they don't have the restrictions in Massachusetts, so please keep that in mind. Doesn't make sense to ban it in Bridgewater, if that's even a consideration. You don't have to drink it if you don't want to. We don't know if we're going to get into it, but we want to be able to have the option, and we can't do that or don't want to go through the expense. If Bridgewater's going to turn around and say, "Sorry, you just spent millions of dollars to get your place set up and get approval," we're not going to allow it. So I really feel that you need to take into consideration. And one of the, you had a lot of good articles, but a lot of them were old. There hasn't been anything new. So, and Mr. Wood, he's not here, but he brought it up in two different meetings. He's done research, and one of them was his uncle, who was a farmer, who said, "No, you shouldn't drink raw milk." I want to remind everybody that one of the persons in this town that is for it is a farmer, 66-year-old farmer, who has been in the farming since he was born, has done a lot with dairy. He has an associate's degree and a bachelor's science degree in animal science. He has worked at numerous farms. He was an artificial inseminator at, for farms, so he's seen all the different types of farms and how they regulate, how they milk. He's also was a dairy tester, milk tester, and they test the cows. So he's very familiar with numerous, more farms than you would know. He's worked in New York, he's worked in Western Mass, and his own farm. So I think his knowledge about farming should be considered, not just one other person from another state who has had possibly bad recommendation. So I hope you take the time to really look at things and really consider this. I don't know what the discussion's going to be about, but depending on what's discussed, you might hear from me at the end of the meeting. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Are there other citizens who care to step forward? Yes, Dr. Hunt.
Good evening. Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, Bridgewater. I want to speak to the zoning just before you tonight. First thing I want to recognize, there was a huge amount of work that went into that. Staff here in town, consultant at the planning board, lots of people worked on that, and I really think going forward, this will be a very good zoning change for the town of Bridgewater. I did review the outtakes that were included in your agenda package and the change table, and there's a couple of pieces missing from that. And I just let you guys know so that you may need to be more attention paid to that. I want to say also that I have a February 13th, 2007, letter to the then Board of Selectmen Chair, Mr. Lemon, that called the gateway district an overlay district. Unfortunately, that overlay word did not make it into all of our zoning. It was intended, because I was part of the people, committee that worked on it, it was intended to be an overlay so that we weren't restricting the business development anywhere other than in the front property and making it look like a really pleasant, good-looking gateway district. So I would like the council at some point, and the planning board at some point, to consider revisiting that designation as an overlay rather than a full zoning district. It's splitting lots, quite frankly, and that's not the best thing to do. Also, I'm looking for section 8.8 and 8.9, where they went. I cannot find in the review where those particular ones went to. Maybe someone could address it in a little bit. But more importantly is the design review element that's in this current zoning. That was put in there specifically to have a committee of Bridgewater residents to look at designs for development in that district so that we, in fact, had something that the design guidelines that were included in the zoning in effect. I do note that the design review has been indicated to be removed, that no DCR exists. We will redraft this section for insertion at a later date. I'm just asking the council to make sure that happens, because it's really important to protect the gateways into Bridgewater and not let them revert back to the old strip mall concept. The committee back then spent many hours trying to work on this to make it effective. So, again, I mentioned that the original order became a gateway overlay district. The concept that a planning board appoint a design review committee was specifically spelled out in some of the documents and including the letter that I just mentioned. And I'm pleased to see that this element will be revised, but I encourage the town council to pay careful attention to what did not get into the change section. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Are there any other citizens who care to step forward for citizen open forum? It appears not. I want to thank you all for your comments. Moving on to appointments, there are no appointments to be considered this evening. Under item F hearings, we do have two hearings scheduled. I note that the time is 7:26, and I will call through order the hearing on the order of taking. This is order FY22-057, and I would first defer to the town manager for explanation.
Mr. President, as I explained in the first reading, this is fairly simple. It's what we refer to as a friendly taking of a small piece of property at the corner of High Street and Wall Street in order to straighten that intersection in anticipation for the result of the roof construction of the bridge across the river.
Thank you very much. Are there any general questions from the members of the public with respect to this proposed taking?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry?
Mr. President, can I just mention, I'm not sure if Consulor Moore, but could not hear what the town manager just described. Yeah, the same with me. Thank you.
My apologies. The mic was off. I will repeat what I said. This is essentially a friendly, it is a friendly taking of a small piece of property at the corner of Wall Street and High Street, which is needed in order to reconfigure that intersection and square it off so that it makes for a safer intersection because of the bridge replacement and the dam removal project that will be upcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. And once again, are there any general questions from the public? And seeing none, is any member of the public here to speak in favor of this proposed order? I see none. Is there anyone from the public who cares to speak in opposition to this proposal? I see none. Debra, we have no, no one else virtually who's expressed this? All right, thank you. And finally, are there questions from the councilors with respect to this proposed taking? I see none. I would make a motion to close the hearing. It is now 7:29. I'll make a motion, and is there a second to close the hearing?
Second.
Thank you very much. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And the second hearing of this evening, I will open now. I see the time is 7:29, and I will open the hearing on granting of the transfer of a Class II used auto dealer's license. And is there anyone here representing the petitioner? I believe not. The council, the petitioner, I should say, has agreed to seek a continuation of this matter until the September 13th council meeting for the finalization of some details. And I would entertain a motion for continuance of this matter.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. And a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. I mean, second, sorry.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Thank you. Seeing none? Yes, Consulor? Yes, Consulor?
You're voting to continue the hearing.
He doesn't have to close.
Correct.
We're just closing the hearing.
You don't, the hearing?
No, you're not closing.
Well, I'm sorry. I've misspoken. We are continuing the hearing until September 13. Thank you very much. Item G, license transactions. We have one transaction. This is Petition P 2023-003. For your information, Consulors, the petitioner has asked to withdraw the petition. It was seeking a road closure. This was being done on behalf of the Fellowship Masonic Lodge. I understand that the particular event is ongoing as planned, but the lodge will no longer seek the road closure authority. So this item has been removed from our consideration this evening. Presentations, we have a presentation, but that will actually follow in order. That will be with respect to the proposed zoning recodification that we'll speak about shortly. Moving on to Item I, the town manager's report. The first item, Mitchell School Building update, and I would defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick report on the Mitchell School Project. It does continue to get close to the end. And the contractor and the OPM and the architect are all racing towards that finish. One possible delay, which I don't believe at this point will cause any delay in the opening of school, but a possible delay due to the late shipment of the wood flooring for the gym was noted today at a project meeting. Bacon Construction, the contractor for that project, has indicated that if it arrives this week, they are fairly confident that they can get that installed and finish prior to the opening of school on September 6. If it doesn't, then they are not so confident that they can get the gym floor ready for the opening of school. Otherwise, the furniture is being installed, ceiling tiles are being placed after being inspected, after the final inspections. And final electric is being installed. There is a slight problem with some supply chain as it pertains to electrical, but that seems to be working out. And otherwise, the HVAC and the other systems are being adjusted, and the building is being commissioned. So it is going to come down to the wire, but I do think it'll open on time. It may be completely, it may not be completely finished, but I do believe it'll open on time. And that's good news considering what kind of other supply chain issues and other labor shortages have been affecting other projects. So that's good news overall, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dutton, yes, Consulor?
Through you to the town manager. So with the gym, the gym's not installed. The school's still open, is correct? They just won't have access to a gym?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you, Consulor. Yes, Consulor Perry?
Thank you. So again, I know you just said that everything is basically on time to open on time. What if it is not prepared? What is, is there a week delay? What's the plan for that school if it's still not quite ready to open on time?
I have not asked that question of the superintendent, but I'm sure he has a plan. I don't think it involves, I don't think it involves trying to open up with K, pre-K to 2 in another place. My guess would be it would just be a delay on the opening for those particular classes. But I can find out with more specificity.
There was a Plan B in place, just in case. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions for the town manager with respect to the school project? I just have one question, if I may, Mr. Dutton. I know that there was previously a reference made to the date for a taxpayer walkthrough of the facility. Is that date actually established at this point?
We'll find out Monday. I think, in fairness, I think the committee has always been tentative about that taxpayer tour date because right now, I think the race is to get the building finished. But that date is still out there, and if that changes, we'll certainly let everybody know.
All righty. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item B, website cleanup, and Mr. Dutton?
Yes. Website cleanup, the council passed an order requesting that the website be cleaned up. And I asked Josh McGraw to spearhead that effort, certainly with boards and committees as well as the departments. And he has continued to try to track down as many extraneous agendas, meeting agendas and minutes as possible to add to the site, to start to populate the site. So each board, commission, committee has reviewed and updated, through Josh, their web pages to update memberships, terms of service, vacancies, and mission statements. And Josh pointed out that the cleanup actually was quite helpful to him because it allowed him to really accelerate the rollout of a component of the website, which is sort of the back end of the website. It's Civic Clerk. And through Civic Clerk, we're going to be looking to modernize, you know, and update how we create meetings, how we distribute meeting materials and so forth. So it did jumpstart that. We pulled the trigger in July, and he is working now to sort of fully roll that out to all the boards and committees. But aside from that, we've added a number of resource links that weren't there before and gone throughout the website and fixed missing links or faulty links and updated and corrected there as necessary. So we did learn, as Josh pointed out, that far better to keep the website updated on a regular basis than to try to go through and do an annual spring cleaning, so to speak. And so if there's a lesson learned there, that is it. We know there are a lot more materials that we can populate the site with. And part of that is my responsibility, just making sure that certainly staff and departments understand the protocols and how things should be posted and the context in which they need to be posted and then the creation of some consistency in how we present documents. So that is, that will be in the works from now till the end of time. But otherwise, we think we've got the site pretty well cleaned up with just information items that needed updating. But if anybody has any suggestions, happy to hear them and happy to pass those along to Josh, who is doing a great job with that overall. But happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Consulor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. I just wanted to say an extra thanks for the effort here. I know with all the day work, it's really hard to find time to keep this content updated. And I think we've also heard that, you know, keeping the content updated helps our residents understand what we're doing and when we're doing it. So I just wanted to reiterate the importance and my appreciation for the work. I loved, I was really excited to see the information about the water on the website. I thought that was really helpful. And also the information about vacancies on committees. I think as people look to get involved, it's a great way for them to find out what those opportunities might be. And I did notice that there were two openings on the water and store board up there posted. So I think, you know, that might be timely as well. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Consulor Moore. Are there other questions from the councilors with respect to that matter of the website cleanup? Seeing none. Item C is drought and water issues. And Mr. Dutton, if you would, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as councilors know, on Friday, we issued an outdoor water use ban. That comes in response to a couple of things, obviously in response to the drought, which has caused dangerously low levels of water in both of our water towers. Also comes because of the overuse of our 10 wells to supply the water that goes into those water towers. So to be clear, our temporary policy, temporary restrictions are the use of all water outside is prohibited, including any type of sprinklers, handheld as well, and car washing. Filling of pools is already forbidden under our existing ordinance. And prior to these emergency restrictions, the handheld watering was permitted outside. That is not permitted any longer. The one exception that we did carve out was the watering of vegetable gardens, which may be watered by hand between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. We have been enforcing the ban, first with informal informational visits to residents, then the issuance of warnings, and then a $50 fine for a second offense and beyond. It's a $100 fine. And just as sort of an aside, we issued that. That was in the works, obviously, after Monday's notification that the water towers were dangerously low. The emergency restriction was in the works. In the meantime, the day we issued our emergency order, a good number of southeast Massachusetts towns and south shore towns initiated essentially the same restrictions. So we are in plenty of company when it comes to restricting the use of water. I will point out also, as it pertains to the wells, we have 10 wells that we operate on a normal basis. We rest at least two of those wells for several weeks, if not several months, on a rotating basis. And we have not been able to rest any of our wells since June, I believe it was June 26, when we rested two wells for about three hours. And then they were needed to maintain the demand. So obviously, we are running right now at full capacity, and we need to reduce the demand on our water system in order to regenerate and get our water towers back up to a reasonable level. Generally, about 80% to 85% is where our water towers normally are. So certainly not something that we want to do, and especially for folks who take great pride in their properties and flower gardens and lawns, but necessary in order to preserve the system for the greater good. But again, happy to answer questions, if any councilors have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Questions? Consulor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for the update on the water issue in the town. I know there's a lot of concern out there in the public about the restriction. My question to you is, what would it take? What indicators are you going to be looking for to either lift the ban or modify the restrictions? What kind of indicators will you look for? And do you have a timeframe on when that could happen?
I think the first indicators will be whether we can rest our wells as we normally would and still provide, meet the demand in terms of the heights of the water and the water towers. I think the second indicator will be the state's designation. The state has put us into a Level 2, Level 3 drought, I think, now. And so once the state scales that back, obviously after some rainfall, then we would take a look at that as well. But I think the primary indicator is going to be whether our wells, as we normally would run them, can sustain the supply that can meet the demand. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions with respect to that matter? Just one, if I may, Mr. Dutton. I know that over the weekend, the electronic message boards used throughout the town, there are three or four of them, I think. And I believe that, I believe that they had, in fact, been giving the message that handheld hoses were appropriate, were acceptable under the ban, but I believe that's not consistent with your order. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'll have to take a look at that. Handheld for gardening purposes, for vegetable garden purposes within those timeframes is allowed, but generally not, otherwise. So I'll double check that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry. I think I've missed Consulor Moore. Consulor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. You said that we're running all wells, which is unusual. So I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about what is the risk of not resting a well? And maybe as part of that question, should residents expect some change to their water supply? You know, does running all wells make it more likely to be tainted? You know, is there some other consideration that people should be aware of since we're in this state?
No, that's a great question because running all of our wells does have adverse impact on the coloration, the discoloration of the water. And it also brings, generally brings more iron or manganese out of each of those wells, which is the cause of the discoloration. Again, not dangerous to drink, but certainly not aesthetically appropriate in a water supply. So running all those wells brings those minerals back up into the supply at a greater concentration than they normally would come out of a normal pumping operation. It also causes an increase in the flow in the pipes or any dramatic increase in the demand for water increases the flow in the pipes, which will also cause additional discoloration. So residents will see, will see additional discoloration just due to the fact that we're running on all of our wells. We do have one well that we like to try to use sparingly. And that well has been identified as one that has the greatest iron and manganese content of all 10 of the wells. So that one in particular will cause additional discoloration anyway. But the other factors also will contribute to that discoloration. In terms of long-term adverse impact, not only do we sacrifice the clear color of the water, but we also run the risk of permanent damage to the wells. So if you're pumping at maximum capacity for an extended period of time, you always run the risk the well will run temporarily dry and you'll blow out, blow out your pumping system. I mean, obviously, the alarms, we have all kinds of alarms set on our wells, but certainly you could run that risk conceptually. So.
Thank you. Are there further questions from the council?
Not a question, were I was.
Yes, Consulor?
We received a letter pertaining to the water usage, and I believe it did say handheld for gardens only. Not lawns, no flower beds. It did say for, specified vegetable gardens only. The letter I received, anyway.
Thank you, Consulor. No further questions on that topic? Moving ahead to Item D, update on charter amendments. Mr. Dutton, please?
I don't have a whole lot to add. The town clerk, Mary Lee Hunt, sort of explained it pretty well. But we, good news is, we have two pieces of legislation that are sitting on the governor's desk for signature. And on the, the one important to the council on the charter changes, just be aware, Senate counsel, Senate legal counsel had rewritten what we had sent them. I think we sent them four or five pieces separately, which was a good strategy, since they were able to entertain all of those. They put them all into one bill and passed the one bill. And then they made some other minor changes. Obviously, April, the April election has come and gone, so they eliminated that and just gave you 180 days from the passage and, you know, governor's signature on the bill, 180 days to hold the election, which obviously is well within the council's ability to do. So that's really all I had on that one. But as I say, Consulor, or Town Clerk Hunt kind of told you what the ramifications are, so.
Thank you. Are there questions for the town manager on that topic? Yes, Consulor Gallagher?
Thank you. So, Mike, in the past, when legislation gets approved or signed by the governor, how is the town notified? You get a fax? Do you get a phone call? Do you get an email? How, I mean, so, I mean?
I got a text a Sunday afternoon. I got a text a Sunday afternoon, Senator Pacico. But honestly, it's sort of hit or miss how we get notified. We have to keep track of it, and if we really want to know in a timely manner, we have to keep track of it. But I will say, you know, thanks to both of our legislators, Senator Pacico and Representative Demilia, we've been kept pretty well informed specifically on the progress of this piece of legislation. And I think it's one of the few towns or cities that actually got through the legislature this session, so I think that's the case.
So the, the change, there was a change made that will require that we must hold an election within 180 days? Is that part of the language?
Exactly.
So if we don't act with the guideline, with the timeframe that Mrs. Hunt presented to us, and can't do it in November, in conjunction with another election to try to save money, although it's going to require more manpower, then we will probably have to have another election before the April election to accommodate the charter changes.
Correct.
Just so you know.
Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, according to what Mrs. Hunt stated, do we need to have some sort of special meeting before August 12th to discuss this based on a certain timeframe to get, if we want to try and shoot for the November election?
I would say yes. If you're trying to shoot for the November election and piggyback off the state's election, you would, I think, the clerk's timeline would dictate that you need to have some, you know, set the date and set the election.
So that special meeting would just be to set the actual date and get that?
Set the date, and I think after that, it's, it's a good thing everybody's here. Set the date, and then after that, it's just timelines that run through you.
They back off from whatever date you set.
Right, right. So you would set the election, and then all of those timelines would kick into place.
Yeah, I just, when she made the presentation, that was the one question I had, so I thought it was a good time to bring it up. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor George?
Through you to the town manager. So I'm going to have you break out your crystal ball. What are the odds on you getting notification by the 12th that everything has been signed, sealed, and delivered? And the reason I ask is, I understand that we're going to have probably the need to have a special meeting to set it. I just would like to have that in hand, because unfortunately, I think there's a few other things going on up at the legislature right now that I don't know if it's going to impact the timeline of little town of Bridgewater getting their things approved. So, you know, I mean, I'm all for, we're going to have to scope this out, but we're going to have everything in hand by the 12th.
My guess, my crystal ball, which is usually really, really cloudy, so I don't even know why I tell, give you an answer. I would say by the 12th, we should know that the governor signed it. Really, that's all, it's only waiting for the governor's signature.
Oh, okay.
And there's nothing controversial, there's nothing that would prevent him from signing.
All right, thank you. Other further questions? Yes, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Just to piggyback off that, so if we do set that special meeting for the 12th, but we still haven't got the signature from the governor, can we still act if the governor were to sign it, or does that create some stickiness?
I defer to Jason on that.
Yeah, I don't think you can act until the governor signs it, because then the actual charter remains the old charter, right?
Yeah, that's what I was, okay. Just wanted to double-check.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
All right, thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll move to Item E, the Bristol Plymouth Technical School debt impact. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the council knows, the voters in the BP district, which includes Bridgewater and a number of other towns, including Taunton, city of Taunton, voted to move forward with the construction of the new technical school in Taunton. This is a capital expense estimated to be just over $300 million, which will be offset by the MSBA by approximately $130 million. That leaves the member towns with a local share to be split among us of $130 million, sorry, $170 million. And that, the proportion of that chunk of money that we have to pay every year is determined by the number of students at BP each year, that we send to BP each year. So this year, Bridgewater students make up 10 and 1/2% of the students, so we would be paying 10 and 1/2% of that total debt. That number is fairly consistent year to year, that 10 and 1/2%, so that is what I based our numbers on to give you an idea of how it impacts our debt. The life of the debt, according to BP, and their financial advisers, is about 34 years. They've chosen a declining debt model, which means that we pay the most upfront, and then it declines over a period of that 33, 34 years. So right now, we're looking at an estimated obligation in the first, I'll call it the first heavy year, which is FY '25, of $1,300,000. As an aside, it looks as if BP is anticipating two bondings, one early in the project and then one later in the project, which would, in about FY '28, when the project is at completion. So after that, after FY '28, our obligation on an annual basis shrinks to about $1 million gradually over a period of years. So it's about $1 million in 2038, and then falls off over the next 14 years after that. So that's essentially where we are with what we'll, at least what we're projected to be owing. And to put a little bit of context around it, we are going to have to put a ballot question on an upcoming election to debt exclude this debt, because our budget obviously cannot sustain a $1,300,000 hit without, you know, significant number of layoffs and cost reductions elsewhere. But overall, I can tell you, in terms of debt, we're in a very good position. As a percentage of our equalized valuation, our debt is below 1%. That's very good right now. In 2021, our outstanding debt per capita was $760, and that will go up a bit due to the fire station project. It is still about 1/5th of West Bridgewater, and it's about, I think it's about 1/4 of East Bridgewater. So our total debt service is well below our neighbors in most of the ways, all of the ways that you would actually look at it. But I will stress that it will require an upcoming debt exclusion election, and obviously we'll work with the council, president, vice president, to try to come up with a date that makes sense, and certainly the town clerk, in order to make sure that whatever we schedule will work all the way around. But that gives you sort of an idea of how that impacts our total debt. It will add, obviously, to our total debt, but it doesn't put us in the stratosphere by any means when it comes to total outstanding debt obligations. But again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, what fiscal year would that debt approximately hit us?
The, they're small amounts, due in '24, and then in 2025 is when it really would hit. The first, the first big hit for us would be FY '25.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions from the councilors? And seeing none. I thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. Moving on to Item J, discussions. We do have a discussion scheduled this evening, and that is the potential sale of raw milk in Bridgewater. I have prepared for the councilors a, an overview of the timeline of this matter, which may be helpful for them, particularly if they were not present for some of the previous discussions. I'll just give a very brief bullet point overview for the benefit of the general public. In March, Counselor Souza had introduced a bill, introduced a proposed order to permit the sale of raw milk on farms that were appropriately licensed for that purpose by the Commonwealth. No farm in Bridgewater is currently licensed for that purpose. And that was referred to the Community and Economic Development Committee. On June 30th, the town manager received advice from the State Department of Agricultural Resources confirming that no action needed to be taken by the town to permit the sale of raw milk, except that any farm doing so would need to be appropriately licensed. Through public comment, it became obvious that some citizens were erroneously believed that the Bridgewater Board of Health had a regulation prohibiting the sale of raw milk, but in fact, there is no such prohibition in the town of Bridgewater in force. On June 30th, also the same day, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to consider the proposed order, and by vote of two to one, the committee voted to return that matter to the council without recommendation. On July 12th, I had presented a slide presentation before the council entitled "The Public Health Hazards of Raw Milk." I've given to all of the councilors present this evening a hard copy of that presentation, of the PowerPoint slides that were used in that presentation, for the benefit of those who may not have been here to observe it in person. Following the presentation, a limited discussion took place, and Counselor Souza posed two questions that I had agreed to undertake on his behalf. He had asked first about the date of the regulations of the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources that provide for the regulation of the sale of raw milk. And I did provide to the councilors here tonight, I don't think I have it in front of me, but a copy of the response that was received from Mr. Michael Cahill, the Director of Animal Health for the Commonwealth. I know that he did provide a fairly lengthy explanation of the date during which the regulations were promulgated. The other question Counselor Souza raised was if we could learn what number of instances of outbreak of disease in Massachusetts in the past 10-year period have been found to be attributable to consumption of raw milk or raw milk products. I referred that question to Mr. Michael Cahill of the Department of Agricultural Resources. He informed me, and again, this is reflected in what I've delivered to the councilors this evening, he informed me that the question would need to be directed to the State Department of Public Health. I did follow up by filing a, basically a Freedom of Information Act request to the Department of Public Health. That was actually done online, I've shown you some evidence of my having done so. I did receive a follow-up telephone call from the Department of Public Health confirming their receipt, and we talked through some of the particulars of that request. But nonetheless, the actual result we were seeking has not yet been received from the Department of Public Health, but it is forthcoming, and I'll certainly make that available to the councilors upon my receipt. At our last meeting on July 12th, Councilors Gallagher, George, and Souza requested that a discussion take place this evening to continue the topic of raw milk and the potential raw milk sale here in Bridgewater. And the order that was considered last time, last session by the council...
President Chase, just a point of clarification, I don't think I, I don't recall requesting a discussion.
I don't either.
Actually, that was part of the discussion that took place immediately following my presentation. You were in agreement along with Councilors Gallagher and Souza.
I was just looking for questions.
Nonetheless, the council concluded that the proposed order had been rendered moot by the fact that there was nothing the town needed to do to approve the sale of raw milk. And by a vote of six to nothing, the proposed order was tabled. So that brings us to where we are. Now, I feel that I have had my say. I have presented in about a, I think I recall, about a 45-minute presentation, about 50 slides for the benefit of the public and the councilors, indicating the position of a number of federal and state governmental authorities, agencies, such as the CDC and the FDA and National Institute of Health and others, and including some respected journals in the fields of science and health, all of which urged caution with respect to the ingestion of raw milk or raw milk products because of the likelihood of contamination by pathogens, whether bacterial, viral, or otherwise. So I feel that my position in terms of having provided to the town as a matter of public safety information, an update as to the potential hazards of raw milk is complete. So I would like the councilors to feel free to voice their own opinion or ask their own questions. I am not an authority, I'm not posing as an authority on the subject. I have simply displayed for your benefit and the benefit of the public what public health professionals throughout the country have said about raw milk.
Can I talk about...
I would invite anyone to offer comment? Yes, Counselor Gallagher?
Well, since it's on the agenda for discussion, I mean, and I appreciate your presentation on July 12th, and I appreciate the education that we all got about perhaps the hazards of raw milk. But now that the order has been tabled, and we found out during that meeting that there is nothing before us to act on as far as raw milk, if Hanson Farm or any farm in Bridgewater wants to pursue the sale of raw milk, it certainly goes, they have to do that through the state. It has nothing to do with the town. So the only thing that we could do is, we could not allow that, but that's not before the council. So I do think that we have discussed this, and we've taken a lot of council time in learning about it and discussing it. So I hope tonight it's done with, and if the local farms want to pursue it, they know what they need to do.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other council comment?
If you do get the answer back from the Board of Health, I'd appreciate that.
Yes or no, I certainly will. I'm very curious myself to see what we were, the result of our questions. I have nothing further to offer. I thank Counselor Gallagher, because that was a point I neglected to mention, the fact that there is no action before us tonight. No one has brought forward a, any discussion about the possibility of prohibiting the sale of raw milk. And so accordingly, I think that, I think that the Hanson's and other farms in town now are fully aware that if they choose to pursue that, they are free to do so by application for license from the Department of Agricultural Resources. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I thank you very much. Committee reports. Are there committee reports that anyone would care to offer to the council?
I can just, well, I can wait till we get to the orders.
Okay, that's fine. All right. I would, I would offer one update, one committee report, that the Rules and Procedure Committee on July 28th, that was just last week, devoted time to the consideration of order FY '22-025. The councilors will remember that is the... The councilors will remember that is the proposed order brought forward by Councilor Moore to provide for a system of naming town properties, town assets, such as town buildings. We did have discussion on the matter, and we had voted two to zero to keep the matter in committee for the time being. Some additional amendments are being considered by Councilor Moore, and we will provide a further update upon that. And I thank you very much. Legislation for Action, Order FY-22-076, Shared Streets Grant. And I would ask for detail from the town manager, please.
Mr. President, the Shared Streets Grant is something that we had applied for in conjunction with BSU. We were looking at sidewalk replacement, and I'm happy to report that we did receive a grant from the program in the amount of, sorry, in the amount of $200,000 from the Department of Transportation. That is, will be supplemented with another $170,000, I believe, from BSU, and work on that sidewalk project unfortunately won't begin until later this month, and will probably coincide with the return of students, but we're at the mercy of the contractor who has given us the best price. So, so that is in the works, and we will be looking at additional funding as well for additional sidewalk work, but this is a good start for, for us.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, other questions for the town manager?
Mr. President?
I would entertain a, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the town manager. Just to get a sense of, I guess, what $300,000 buys for sidewalks, could you just help frame that for me? Is this a full sidewalk for a large street, or is this a small section of sidewalk? What does 300,000 buy?
200,000.
Well, 200, 300 plus, if you add in the BSU funding, will buy sidewalk replacement down Park Avenue and Park Terrace over towards Shaw Road, and probably that's about it. So not, sidewalks are not an inexpensive proposition, but any, any opportunity we can find grant funding to do it is, is free money, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions? I note that the Finance Committee voted on 7/20 to approve the measure by a seven to nothing vote. And the councilor has the Budget and Finance Committee?
Right. The, Mr. President, the Budget and Finance Committee met before this meeting, and we voted two to zero to recommend.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving ahead to Order FY-22-077, Community Compact Fiber Grant. And once again, please to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brad Dirzak, our IT Director, has been working with the Bridgewater Rainham School District, and this grant jointly filed will, in the amount of $17,466, will allow for the fiber connection between the town's fiber and the district's fiber, and through that will open up the ability, eventually open up the ability for the district to take advantage of the same internet access that we enjoy through BSU. So this is a critical piece to that, and I certainly would encourage you to accept it.
Thank you. I would note that the Finance Committee had on 7/20 voted seven to nothing to approve the measure. And Councilor Gallagher, can you inform us about the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met before this meeting and voted two to zero to recommend.
Well, thank you very much. In light of that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. Moving on to the State Primary Election Warrant. I will, in the absence of Mr. Wood, ask this evening if the town attorney could comment if he would, he would urge that the council adopt this measure.
I would. So that we could avoid a lawsuit, that would be nice.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Councilor Wood will be happy to hear that I've asked the question.
He told you to ask me that, didn't he?
Oh, no, my own volition. Thank you, though, for that.
How many votes does it need? Just a simple majority, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
Okay, just checking.
I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Tag it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, councilors? And seeing none, I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution FY-22-012, Resolution Adopting the Town of Bridgewater, Mass Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022. If you would please, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Hazard Mitigation Plan is an update to our 2015 plan. It is, we commissioned Old Colony Planning Council to complete it for us. It's, it's our first individual hazard mitigation plan. Otherwise, prior to that, they were done on a, on a regional basis, so this is our first individualized one. And it is 638 pages of valuable information and identifies the existing man-made and natural hazards that, that we need to prepare for and plan for. And I, my kudos to Old Colony Planning Council for their work on this, and certainly Jennifer and her team as well. So it's in front of you for adoption. It is, I will say that it needs to be adopted tonight so that we can tomorrow submit for reimbursement to secure the grant fundings for this that we had been given a couple of years ago. So, so it is in front of you for adoption. I encourage you to adopt it.
I thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the council? I see none. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. Moving on to Proposed Ordinance, FY-22-021, Zoning Ordinance, Codification of Zoning Bylaws to Ordinances. And I would ask if Jennifer DeBois-Brian would care to offer comments. I think she has a, some remarks and a presentation prepared for us.
Actually, before Jennifer starts, if I could just ask Deborah if you could let me share the screen.
Oops, sorry. Do you want to add anything else?
No.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for having me. It's been quite a long process. I was doing my presentation over the weekend, and I figured out it's been almost exactly four years since we started this process. And I started working here four and a half years ago, so it's been pretty much my entire tenure of working here. So I'll be happy to make this presentation for you and hopefully get some movement to adoption of the zoning ordinances. So with that being said, I had Deborah, I believe, forward you a memo I wrote and a zoning mapping document that shows, you know, where things were in the existing ordinances and where they've been moved to, and we can get to that in a minute. But first, I just wanted to go through a quick timeline of the process that we went through and some dates, some key dates. So in 2018, we hired Attorney Mark Babrowski as our consultant on this project. The town manager, Michael Dutton, formed a committee that consisted of Counselor Columbodis, Patrick Driscoll, the Planning Board Chairman, myself, a zoo engineer who at the time was the town engineer, who is now our DPW director, and Stephen Solari, who is our zoning enforcement officer. We worked with Attorney Babrowski throughout 2018 and 2019. We had several meetings with him, I think it was approximately 12, and several drafts were created during that time to go over some of the changes that we wanted to see to bring our zoning more in line with state law, federal law, and some of the little things that Steve would see when he would go out and do, you know, zoning enforcement and inspections. So by 2019, we had what we thought were pretty decent ordinances, and so in November and December, we had a couple of public workshops, one with the CDC and the Planning Board, and the other was just a straight public workshop. We had about a dozen or 12 to 20 people at those workshops, provided some input, gave some more feedback. And then in January of 2020, Draft Number 10 was submitted to the council for a first reading. That was referred to the Planning Board for a public hearing, and the Planning Board had a public hearing in March of 2020. And then we had a pandemic. And during that time, we tried to proceed with public hearings, and the public felt they weren't informed as well as they could have been about some of our changes. They felt that we were trying to change too many things. So we went back to the council at that time in May, and we asked them to just withdraw it, and we were going to strip it all back and go back to our original goal, which was reorganize, bring everything back to make it legal, and make it a clearer document for people to understand, and then substantial changes we would make later on. So that's what we did. So you withdrew it in May of 2020, and then for the rest of 2020 and 2021, Attorney Babrowski worked down on stripping out some of the stuff that we took in, put in, and he took it all out, and he gave us back, at the end of 2021, he gave us back a stripped-down ordinance, which was known as Draft Number 17. Then we had a couple, no, I'm sorry, that was, I think, Draft 15, because we had a couple more workshops that the Planning Board had, and the CDC wanted to see, a couple other minor changes, and we did those in January and February of this year. And when those workshops were finally finished, we came up with Draft Number 17, which is what was submitted to you in April of this year for first reading, referred back out to the Planning Board, and then in May of this year, the Planning Board and the CDC held a public hearing, and they both recommended unanimously to adopt this ordinance with three typos, which have been since corrected in the document you had before you this evening. So that's sort of the process timeline. And then if you just, so the modification, the recodification of the changes, as I said, I provided a mapping document. I don't have, I'm not going to have that on the screen tonight because it was too long to share, but I, I gave that all to the council, and I am happy to provide to any public that wants to see it. Basically lays out where in the document, in the existing zoning, every section is, and where it has moved to, been removed, or there's five new sections. I just want to note the six sections that have been removed and why we removed them. One section was considered superfluous. It had been, it was a more repetitive section. Two sections are already in our existing town code. They're general ordinances. They don't need to be repeated in our zoning ordinances. One is not an ordinance at all. It's actually a council regulation, so we took that out. And then one was folded into another section, and then one, which Dr. Hunt had referred to, the design review, will be rewritten at the next phase of our zoning updates. We had, he had brought that to our attention at one of our public hearings, and we had promised him and indicated that that would be one of the first rewrites that we did after this recodification is hopefully adopted. So that is on the list right away to redo. So those are the, the removals that we did, and that's why they were removed, and then I'll go into the new sections next. So there are six new sections. Generally, they're not overly, you know, substantial. The first two are the Performance Standards for Large Projects and the Landscaping and Screening go hand in hand. They relate to when the Planning Board is reviewing what we consider large projects that are not single-family or two-family homes. So it's commercial projects, industrial projects, and multifamily developments, and it gives the Planning Board standards and guidelines to approve these projects. It revolves around noise and lighting and transportation and parking and aesthetics and fiscal responsibility of the developers. So it gives, and utilities and emergency systems and security, and I listed them all up there, but it gives the Planning Board some control over the size and the massing and the scale of these developments that they have never had before. So it brings a better quality development to the town of Bridgewater. So that's what we were looking to do with those two, two sections. Section 8.6 is the senior housing section. Currently, in our current zoning, we have a use in our use table for senior housing, but we have no guidelines or guidance around senior housing, so that just adds in that guidance. It just tells a developer, if you want to do senior housing, this is what it has to be. We do allow it, but nobody knew how to do it before. Now they do. 10.7 is Site Plan Review for Section 3 Uses. For those of you who don't know what Section 3 is, under Master and Allow Chapter 48, Section 3 is also known as the Dover Amendment. It protects certain uses. It protects religious uses, educational uses, and agricultural uses. But if we have this section, the Planning Board can review for, and regulate for bulk, height of structures, yard sizes, lot sizes, setbacks, and parking. So we put this in there, so it does give the Planning Board some authority to review for those things, which is allowed. And then 10.8 is the Request for Reasonable Accommodation. This section is required under the Fair Housing Act and the American with Disabilities Act so that if somebody needs an accommodation, they know how to get that. And that way, it would be to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get that accommodation. So those are the six, what we're calling new changes in this recodification. And from our perspective, those changes are necessary at this time. Two of them, I believe, are more legally, the last two. The middle one, the senior housing, is just to clarify a use we already have, and the first two, I guess you would argue, are the most substantial, but the Planning Board needs a way to be able to do their job, and that's, that's how we do that. So that's what we've done for the new sections. I just wanted to address a couple of things, the two, I already addressed the design review that Dr. Hunt spoke of, and then he mentioned two sections that he wanted to know where they were, and I just spoke with him, and as he was leaving, he wanted me to mention to you that those two sections don't exist in our current zoning, 8.8 and 8.9. I looked them up as he was sitting there, and I spoke with him, and he wanted to express his apologies, that he was mistaken, so those two sections don't exist. So that's really all I have for our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, you know, four years is a long time to spend on a recodification, so I'm hoping that the council sees it within themselves to adopt this document at some point in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, councilor?
No, I mean, my question was, is no action for us tonight, so...
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Jennifer from the councilors?
I have a couple, a couple questions.
Yes, Councilor Perry.
Thank you. So Jennifer, at this stage, if, if any one of the councilors sees anything within the document that we are not, might be in agreement in, in with it, what is the procedure to make any potential changes going forward before we ratify?
I'm going to refer to the town attorney.
It would be made at the council level, depending on what the actual changes are, right? So if it's a substantive change that is going to make the bylaw more restrictive, it may have to go back. If it isn't, if there, if there are little things that aren't major changes that... that make them more restrictive, then you probably can keep it at the council level. So it's going to have to be kind of a, we'll see as we go type thing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I could add one thing to piggyback on Mr. Rollins. So for about three years, I've been getting probably, probably every couple of months, I got a call from the deputy commissioner of the DOR wanting to know if we've voted it yet, if we've voted it yet. And the reason is that they're holding some funds that were allocated, state funds that were allocated to us to offset the cost of this. They're not enormous, you know, I think it's $12,000, something in that neighborhood, but they are holding that, and will pay that over when we do adopt the zoning. So I'm hoping to get it done before the end of the Baker administration.
And I'd also just add up to that, too. I view, and I've always viewed in every position that I've worked in other towns, zoning as a living, breathing document, right? It's not something that should sit on a shelf for 25 or 30 years and never get changed or modified in any way, because things are always changing, right? Ideas are always improving and modifying. So if there's something that you say to yourself, well, I'm not sure, you might want to see how it works, we should always be coming back to you with changes. So it might not be something you want to change right now, but maybe, you know, in six months, you say, hey, let's look at that and rethink that, or let's change that. The benefit of a council form of government is we don't have town meeting, and we don't have to wait, you know, once a year to make zoning changes. We can make zoning changes at any time.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
I thank you, Jennifer. Are there other questions for Jennifer?
No.
Seeing none. Jennifer, I would thank you very much for your comments and your presentation, and all of your work on this matter throughout the years.
Thank you.
I've been a member of the community and economic development committee, which has participated in joint sessions with the planning board to discuss the various changes that were proposed. And we certainly appreciate the work of your department, of the planning board, of attorney Bobrowski. He is, of course, a noted authority on the subject, and I know that he's devoted quite a few hours to this particular matter. For the benefit of the general public, who may not have been following this very closely, but this recodification effort was really intended to, you know, to take a kind of a patchwork set of zoning ordinances, or zoning bylaws, really, that existed in town, and had come about over the course of many years, and make them more consistent with one another, make them, certainly update them where necessary, and a good number of them did require certain updates, in order to make them compliant with state law. And certainly, that's something that attorney Bobrowski was very good at doing. And in addition, the vast majority of changes were really very cosmetic, actually, you know, including, you know, typographical changes and, you know, spelling errors and things of that sort. It was really very ministerial for the large part. But it has been a tremendous effort, and we appreciate all of your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This matter could be considered for advertising, and I would ask if, it would certainly entertain a motion to do so, if anyone is inclined to do that.
A move that we send this to advertising?
A second for discussion?
Yes, for discussion.
So through you to the town attorney, there's still some things that need to be fixed. I think they're minor things. So do we have to wait till they're fixed before we can make a motion to go to advertising?
No, I don't think, I mean, especially, are you talking like typographical things?
It just, I don't even know what they are. I just noted in there that there were things to be fixed. I just want to time this right.
Yes, I think it's fine to send to advertising, and then when we come back here and you all can contemplate what is out there. I'm guessing the substantive stuff has already been vetted, so.
And the typos have already been fixed. The document you have in front of you tonight is the document.
Okay.
So then I would, yeah, I would send it to advertising then. Yep.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right. I thank you. So your second is for, to send to advertising?
Yeah.
I thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? And seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And I lost my place. Moving on to old business, I see we have none. New business, order FY 23-007, amendments to the lease of buildings between the town of Bridgewater and Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District Committee. And I would defer to councillor George for his introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Mr. Dutton sent out the lease agreement that we currently have with the district on the schools that are in Bridgewater, and in reviewing it, I got to Exhibit A, and it's woefully outdated. It references schools that are no longer schools. I believe we also have to add the, I'll call it the Bridgewater Middle School, the old high school, on this as well. So my, well, my understanding, but I'll leave it up to the town attorney, the town manager, to correct me, is this would be somewhat of a simple modification to the lease to Exhibit A, so that we have accurate listings of the buildings in Bridgewater that the lease would cover. We wouldn't be looking to change the terms of the lease or anything of that nature, just bring it up to up to date.
I thank you, councillor. So if I understand, the only changes would be to the exhibit that you've just referenced?
Correct.
I see. Thank you. I would, oh, please, go ahead.
I would probably, and if this is proper, you know, from there, my personal opinion is to, obviously, there needs to be a working group with the town council and the school committee. I would like to keep it as small as possible. I don't necessarily think this has to be reviewed by a lot of people. So my recommendation would be a representative from the town council, the town manager, and whomever the school committee decides to represent them, just to go through the modification and the amendments to Exhibit A.
Thank you, councillor. Your motion would be to establish an ad hoc committee for that purpose?
Well, if we only have one representation, can we actually have a committee? Whatever it's called, I don't particularly care. I just think that if we keep this simplified, we should be able to get this done fairly quickly, I would hope. But then we have attorneys involved, and you never know.
You already said, keep it the same, and I started sweating. I didn't like the sound of that.
But, I mean, I'm open for suggestions, or import, or things like that, but my intent is to come away with this with next steps on, you know, getting this done, and getting it done quicker than the regional agreement, which we haven't even finished yet.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Perry?
I would just like to get the opinion of the town manager and town attorney on their opinion on how we should proceed with this as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dutton, do you have comment?
No, I think that's a, that's a fine strategy. I do agree with councillor George. I think it's fairly, if we're limiting our amendments to Exhibit A, that's pretty straightforward, and hopefully, we'll be back to you at your next meeting with a finalized version.
And I'll volunteer to be on that committee, since I brought it up.
Thank you. Councillors, I'm sorry. Thank you, councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of things. I'm excited to see this. I think I've been talking about this for a few months, and there was some confusion over whether or not it existed. I appreciate the work to find it, and also the work to recognize that it's not applicable to many of the schools that we have. So I like the idea of moving quickly, but I do have concerns with what's actually in the body of the document. It references things like selectmen that aren't here anymore. It talks about the school having to pay for all of their own enhancements. That's not the way that we work. We recently funded the track and other things. And so I, as much as I like the speed, and I think we need it for the new schools, I do think it would make sense for the working group to actually look at the document, and not only update the new schools, but also update the content so that it reflects whatever version of agreement we think matters. And I believe in our district agreement. It does say it's the full council's responsibility to negotiate this versus a town manager action. So I just want to make sure we're respecting that language as well. So I think for me specifically, you know, the things that I think would be interesting to look at, this does talk about the town having rights, retaining rights to use the building with, for a bunch of things, religious ceremonies, et cetera. I think we should revisit that and just update the language to reflect whatever we do today. I think it talks about who pays for improvements to the school, and I think the language in the document doesn't reflect the way that we now work, so we could potentially update that, too. And then just the language cleanup. We don't have selectmen, right? We have a town council, and so I think the language should be updated to reflect that. So as long as the proposal for committee would be open to looking at other things, I would support that. I just want to make sure we don't speed through it and end up with just keeping some confusion that I think exists in the document today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, councillor Gallagher?
And thank you, Mr. President. I certainly understand what councillor George is trying to do here, but, correct me if I'm wrong, you just wanted to deal with the exhibit, which is just the, which is just the buildings.
Well, that's the thing that jumped out at me, obviously, to councillor Moore. If there's things regarding selectmen, we don't have selectmen anymore.
Right.
From a substance perspective, I don't think, but we can look at it, any changes. This is more of getting this document up to referring to things that are in today's state versus it was back in 1994, I believe.
Right.
When it was first signed. I do, I do caution, though, that obviously, you know, this is a current lease, so, you know, you, there are probably some things that I would think both parties would be open with. There may be other things that, you know, the lessor or the lessee probably may not be all that amendable, too. I mean, we'd have to see as it goes, but I guess my overall thing is not looking to redo this entire agreement.
It's more just Scribner's sort of errors, like selectmen is in there, things like that should be looked at, because this lease, from me reading it, it's already in effect until, what, 2034 or something like that?
Yeah.
Right. So we really can't change anything in there, but I don't think there would be issues with changing the word "selectman" to "councilman," or "town" to "city," or whatever, whatever the words are, but the smaller ones.
Would have to look at it for the intent of, you know, what can be changed?
But I think the whole thing.
What can't be.
But I do think the whole thing, councillor George, should go to this ad hoc committee, not just the A, not just Exhibit A.
No, I mean, my understanding is whatever's decided and agreed to has to come back to the council anyway.
Right, right.
So it's not going to be the committee making the recommendations and proving.
Right. But I would encourage the ad hoc just to look at the simplified terms that need to be changed, and not try to rewrite the contract, because we can't. I don't think we can do that. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's my intent of this, is to, we'll say, clean it up.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillors. Further comment or questions? Councillor Souza?
No.
Yes, councillor Moore.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. I agree. I think speed is important. But I do want to reiterate, under the language in here, I personally believe we can't do things that we are doing today, right? So we can't fund improvements to the building. That's clearly something that we're doing today and probably want to continue doing. So I would just encourage, you know, I'm not necessarily looking to insert my opinion in there, although I have some, but I would encourage us to include our town attorney in the discussions and just make sure the language reflects the modern agreement, the way that things actually work. You know, leases are us documenting the agreement we have, and the current one does not. So just to reiterate that. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Dutton, would it be appropriate for your office to assist in assembling the working group for this purpose?
I'd be happy to do that. And I think, as both councillor George and councillor Moore point out, it is a council decision ultimately, so I'm happy to assemble a working group and get some progress done and bring it back to the council for review.
Thank you. I think that would be the best approach. Any further discussion on the matter? Councillor Perry?
Again, I just don't know if it would be appropriate to just make a motion to appoint Mr. George to this ad hoc committee.
I think that would be. Are you, do you care to make that motion?
I am making that motion to.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Then, the motion is that the council's designee to serve on the working group would be councillor George. And we have a motion and a second?
And discussion, yeah.
And in discussion?
Go ahead.
All right, go right ahead.
I have no problem with that. I guess what will be the makeup of the committee? I mean.
Well, what was proposed, I think, by councillor George would be representatives of the council, of the school committee, and did I leave someone out?
Well, I mean, I would leave it to myself, Mr. Dutton, if attorney Rollins needs to be involved, obviously, but then we have to, I mean, we have to go to our tenant and say to them, we want to engage you in modifying this. Whatever the school committee's rules and regulations are, that's what they'll do, and then eventually, we get together and start working through this, so.
And that's where Mr. Dutton's office, how they could assist us?
All right. I just wanted to get a clarification as to who should be on the committee, you know, or the working group.
All right. Well, we do have a motion that the council designee.
Councillor George.
Would, to serve on the working group would be councillor George. And we have a second. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, order FY 23-008, transfer order, capital leasing obligations. And once again, please, Mr. Dutton.
Mr. President, this funds some of our outstanding capital lease purchases, and is in the amount, total amount of $591,626.59. And the source of funds, one from capital stabilization to the tune of 60, sorry, $523,808, and then ambulance reserve fund of $67,818. And I encourage you to refer that to budget and finance and finance committee.
Thank you very much. I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen comments, I would welcome any citizens present who care to address the council to please step forward to the podium, identify yourself, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Hi, Janet Hansen again, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. One question I have on the zoning, I don't know if you can respond to me, but maybe you can email me or something, but on the zoning, is the public going to be able to see the changes, you know, what the zoning is proposed, and if there's a way of showing what it was before? I know you've had a lot of versions, but, so we can have a better comparison, because it's so hard to follow. And where can we see it, you know, on the website? Like, where can we? That would be something of great interest for people that want to see what all the zoning changes are, so we can get a better understanding. And the others, back to the raw milk. I appreciate that there's not going to be, you know, being proposed a ban or anything, but there's still that little bit of uncertainty that I can, you know, I'm afraid that somebody's going to have the brainstorm of proposing an ordinance to ban it. Hopefully not. If, and a big if, if that ever was the case, what about a business, like if you went through all this, and now you're happily in business selling raw milk in Bridgewater, and then all of a sudden, Bridgewater decides to ban it, what happens to that? That's something to consider. What happens to that business that's already in place? Are they grandfathered? Are they going to be told to shut down, which is kind of not fair? You can't just allow a business and then say, oops, we're not allowing it anymore, so you've got to go out of business. So that's something to consider. And I also would like to know, you And I also would like to know, you didn't mention, Mr. Chase, the date of the mass regulations that you asked Michael Cahill about? You didn't give the date. Do you have that date?
I can give you something on that. I'll give you the, a copy of the information.
The date?
Yes.
Okay. And when you get the information from the Department of Public Health, I would hope that you would share that and not just leave everything open-ended. But hopefully, this is a done deal. As I said, we're not sure if we're going to do it. My husband's not sure. It's a lot of expense, but there's other people in town that may, and it's not going to be a mass production here in Bridgewater. We're, we're kind of not a big farming community anymore, sadly to say. And I think that brings me to, you know, hopefully, no more building, but that's a whole nother subject. But, so I thank you, I just, you've got to look at more statistics. The stuff that you have really was old, and it incorporated the whole United States. It didn't specific to Massachusetts, and I have found some things interesting, but I haven't found anything of recent. So it'd be interesting to see what the public health has, and you just have to consider that there's a lot of regulations, and it's not to be taken lightly, and it's not by anybody seriously producing raw milk. So I thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to those responses.
Thank you for your comments. Other citizens? Yes, please.
Mike Dolan, 20, Cheryl Drive. I come before you as a school committee member tonight, want to address something that I may have misunderstood, Mr. Moore, say, around the track. We, as the school committee, took out of excess and deficiency one of our savings accounts, $850,000, to fund the track. So I want to be perfectly clear that that part of the budget never came to the town council for a vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? And seeing none? Council comments? And I'd like to begin this evening with Councilor George.
Oh, thank you. I never know where you're going to start.
You never know, do you?
Probably should have more prepared. No, you know, I, I don't think anyone would be surprised, and we've seen it in regards to the issues with water in general. And I'm totally sympathetic with, you know, the challenges that we've had. We've, we've made some, you know, cap, some significant capital investments that should start seeing some returns down the road, but unfortunately, Mother Nature is, is dealing us, as well as the entire region, some challenges in regards to just being a significant drought. So not only, you know, are we putting a mandate to people on town water, but I'd like to really implore well owners, businesses that are not on town water. I know everyone likes to see, you know, their grass green and things of that nature, but that water has to come from somewhere, and I think even people that are on their own wells potentially, you know, could affect overall the town's ability to draw water off of the wells as well. I think Mr. Dutton brought up a, a great point for private wells, that if you run your well too much and it becomes dry, not only will you lose your, your grass and your hedges, but you could lose all of your irrigation system just by that as well. So, you know, I, I don't like getting up in the morning and seeing, you know, my grass fried, but, you know, willing, obviously, to do that for the long term for the town. So hopefully, Mother Nature will, will deal with some, some good rain weather. I know that's blasphemy in the summertime, but we could use it. But I do appreciate everyone pitching in to try to help us get through this time that hopefully is not going to be too long. So, thank you.
Thank you. And to Councilor Gallagher, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to piggyback on what Council George said, I'd just encourage the residents of town to do what they can to conserve water, at least in the immediate future, and abide by the restrictions that the town has put in place. The sooner we can see our water towers, water fill up again and this, and give our pumps a rest, then the sooner, I think, that the town manager and his staff can take a look at that and ease some of the restrictions, perhaps not eliminate all of them at once, but at least ease the restrictions on the residents. So just, you know, it's going to be a hot week. Do what you can to conserve water, but be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Moving on to Councilor Rushton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, just a brief comment, like to congratulate Firefighter Mansonelli on his retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Columbotes?
No comment today. Thanks.
Thank you. And, who am I leaving out? Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple notes first, a thank you to everyone who was involved with the zoning changes. Four years is a long time to stay committed to something, and I'm really excited to see that over the finish line, and truly appreciate the involvement there. The second thing around the water, the drought, everyone, I think, has said the right things already. I would just add, you know, I think water continuously comes up in front of us. I think we do have challenges communicating with our residents about water in general, and because of that history makes these sorts of emergency communications harder to stomach and I think more difficult for people to absorb. So just another ongoing plug for us to continue to learn from our residents about what they're expecting to hear from us about the water supply and when. A last, maybe, note about the contract, just to remind everyone that, you know, between the time that was written and today, an entire school collapsed, and we had to pay for it a second time. That might mean that the original language is okay, but I think we've got a lot of history now to draw and to potentially influence that discussion, and I'm excited for Councilor George to represent our interest there. And then lastly, you know, I think in public comment, you know, I appreciated the clarification on the track. I am confused, you know, I'm looking at a agenda item with a line item that we voted money on for the track. Certainly can be spent however we need, but I think at least when the money is justified in front of us, there's a, there's a line that says track. So it would be good to make sure that we're all very clear on how money moves around the district, especially since it's our single biggest expense, bigger than all other budget items in our budget combined. So I just, maybe as a follow-up, it'd be good to just learn a little bit more about that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Councilor. To Councilor Perry, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just number one, wanted to extend my apologies. Missing last meeting, I did have COVID for the second time. I'm not sure if anyone else has had it multiple times yet, but I reached that milestone, and it was a much more mild experience this time around. But I did want to extend personal condolences to the families of Ray Perry and Bill O'Donnell. I know multiple members of those families, and I just wanted to extend my sincere condolences to the, to the members of those families. They were, they were great individuals. I also wanted to congratulate Captain Mansonelli on his retirement and thank him for his years of service to the town of Bridgewater. And I'd just say another quick shout out to the, the three ladies turning 100. My own grandmother years ago hit the 100-year mark, so maybe Bridgewater is trending toward multiple centenarians going forward, and maybe it's something we can advertise, you know, a longer life if you come here to the town of Bridgewater, so.
Good water here. We got good water here.
Yeah, we got great water here, yeah. But just a happy, happy birthday to all those women turning 100. Thank you very much.
I thank you. And Councilor Susan?
Well, enough's been said about the water, so I'm not going to repeat any of that other than hoses, handheld, vegetable gardens only. And don't wash your truck.
That's right. Thank you, Councilor. Have I left anything out?
Yourself?
Oh, yes, me. For my part, I would just like to thank everyone for your cooperation, your attendance. As you know, during the summer months of July and August, we are scheduled to hold normally just one meeting. It seems apparent that we will have a need for an emergency session to come up in the next week or so, thereabouts, to be determined. I think that, I hope that doesn't impose a burden on anyone insofar as their, their other plans, their schedule and whatnot, but nonetheless, it's critical that we have an opportunity to prepare for what could be a, an election for the council in, in November, perhaps. We, we thank certainly the town clerk, Mrs. Hunt, who has come forward with some useful guidance with respect to our needs in that regard. I want to thank all the members of the public who have come forward tonight and, as always, to express themselves certainly with regard to, among other issues, the, the matter of the potential sale of raw milk. And as we know, that it is now certainly permissible for any farm which has been duly licensed to engage in the sale of raw milk in Bridgewater, should they elect to do so. So I have no other comments this evening, but again, I, I thank you all for your participation and attendance tonight. We are scheduled for an executive session, and I'll read the magic language. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where discussing the matter in open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Councilor.
If I could, Mr. President, to, through you to the town attorney, I just have a question of clarification. I see many agendas in my work that I do, and I guess my question is, why can't we put the subject matter?
You can't.
I mean, why don't, I mean, I would ask that the subject matter be put on so we know, so I, we know at least what the subject is, whether it's, it's taking of South Street, you know, something simple like that.
Yeah, you have some.
Right, that's just my thought.
I didn't draft the agenda.
No, I hear you, I hear you.
But yes, you can do that.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's my comment, yeah.
Thank you.